It's okay if they don't spend it every year as long as they're saving it for, let's say, a piece of equipment that they might have to save every four years.
Right.
So I think it's okay, you know.
Because I was hoping that we'd build it so that it lasted a little bit longer before we needed to come back in and say, "We need some things."
Well, I mean, they don't have to spend it every year. It just went.
But I'm afraid if they have an overburdened sum of money.
I don't think they're gonna.
Okay, we're going to call the Human Services Committee to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Beeden, Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here. There's no additions, deletions to the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Okay, we're going to jump right into Citizens to be Heard. And Kim, for top.
All right.
Yeah, well, you handed it to me. Go to the top of the pile.
I couldn't even catch my breath. Thank you. I'm here once again. I'm back with the issues of the hazardous water meters that are being forced upon us on the city of Yale. At a January 24 meeting, the city manager told the board that after a quick search, cities charged $35 to $65 fee for not having a new meter installed. And that fee would, of course, have to be justifiable. Then, at the February 14 meeting, he told the board that a $100 fee has been enacted by other cities. Our mayor pro temp, Sherry, claimed, and with, I quote, "Yes, I've seen Ferndale has done it, and at least a half a dozen, if not more, throughout the state have done this." So far, with my own search, I have only found that Ferndale does this. How is this $100 fee justifiable comparing Yale to Ferndale? Ferndale has a bigger population, higher income, higher property value, and they charge quarterly. Yale charges monthly. Sadly, they voted and passed the resolution. That's $1,200 a year to protect my family from RF radiation, privacy, and fire hazards. So it went from $35 to $65 all of a sudden to $100 a month. How is this justifiable? It's not. It's just a blatant retaliation because I stood up. About a month or so ago, I was in contact with Mr. McConnell on this issue. I really thought he was going to help. He sure made it sound like he would. He told me he spoke with our city manager, and he would try to make it to the meeting on the 24th. I wasn't surprised that he didn't show, but at the February 14 meeting, he was there. And I thought, "Cool." He sat right behind us. He even heard my husband and myself speak. But instead of saying anything about the issue or an opinion to the board, he turned out to be the money fairy and gave the city $40,000 from the county for some art BS. And he left. Thank you. Meanwhile, we need a crosswalk and a light, an extra lane up at the school for the kids that walk in emergency vehicles because a child got hit at School Drive in the main road. But Yale got blessed with $40,000 for painting or whatever the heck it's for. I pray there is a guideline that the city can use that money for a light and a crosswalk. Mr. McConnell, remember our conversation about how we need good, honest people to fill these seats? Well, sir, you broke my heart. It's a shame. So who do I go to now? My city refuses to work with me, the ones that don't want these nuisance factors in their homes.
Fifteen seconds, please.
And you are? My commissioner got my hopes up but failed me, and my senator is useless. Oh, and the city also claims they don't have to give us an explanation as to why they won't give an opt-out or provide us with anything, really. The people we pay don't have to tell us anything? Nice. So cities can just keep oppressing the people? I forgot, we're just mere peasants. Just take our money, kings and queens. I wish you all would have been there on Monday's meeting. What a joke. The whole thing was a joke. For 18 months, they dragged their feet on the marijuana grow facility and got a tie vote to put the property that the men were interested in upon the market. 18 months they wasted, this people's time. The property should have been discussed and voted on 14 months ago. Also, a board member asked if she could make a motion while the board was in the middle of a vote on the property. And once again, the notice for meetings was still up on the window of the hall for January. This was Friday afternoon, which was February 25, and the next meeting was Monday, February 28. So I leave you with this: If you're not bumping heads with the devil, then you're walking with them. Thank you.
Sean Treadaway.
Chairman, Bones, Commissioners. The last two years have definitely taught us some things. Just to quote a very scary phrase from President Reagan, always be leery of, "I'm here from the government. I'm here to help." Another thing is communication has seemed to have been selective. This is not just with local government, but higher government as well. But citizens seem to be on a need-to-know basis, seem to be on a basis of, "We'll let you know when we feel you need to know." Simply stated, the lack of communication we feel is unexcusable. We look to you for leadership. We look to you for guidance. We look to you for answers, being that you ultimately are the bosses of the directors of the county. We know that the majority of your job is the fiduciary side of the House in, you know, managing the money of the county. And we understand that, respect that, and you do quite the wonderful job there. But as we've seen in the last two years, large groups of citizens throughout the county, maybe not always represented in this room, but very represented in social gatherings, certain clubs, certain groups of individuals have gotten together, and we all agree that we expect more and we want more. So just to repeat, we're looking for that leadership, that guidance, the answers that we expect to have from each and every one of you at the Board. A well-informed citizenry is what we have become. We are continuing to educate ourselves. We are continuing to educate the groups that we all belong to. We continue to communicate, form larger and larger groups by the day. But by educating ourselves, I feel that we have opened the door to see some of the hypocrisy that has happened throughout the county as well via masking, via cherry-picking the children. Still, very, very true to most of our hearts. So in closing, I hope that everyone is listening. The last few meetings, it has been pleasant to see active communication and debate amongst yourselves on the Board. We appreciate that. We look forward to more, and we definitely look forward to more communication from the Board members and the directors. Thank you.
Lauren Martin.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to show my support for your decision to separate the two currently combined positions the St. Clair County Health Director holds. As Mrs. Baldwin stated, we are only one of two counties in the entire state with them combined. By allowing one person to hold both positions, you are removing the checks and balances component our government was founded on. I believe most of us want similar outcomes, and that is for everyone to be on the same page, open and transparent communication, and having multiple people who make informed decisions that impact our citizens, not single individuals making swooping blanket mandates without even consulting the very people they affect the most. Dr. Merkentant herself said that the public health order was issued in response to a possible looming threat of Omicron, not reactive to the circumstances we were in at the time. Sorry. I don't quite understand how an unelected official thinks they have the authority to issue discriminatory mandates on our children for the sake of what-ifs. As I watched the last meeting, I saw a very common theme. Many colleagues wrote in support for Dr. Merkentant. They all praised her life's work and commitment to the county. While many failed to mention any specifics, what they also didn't say is that they agreed with or supported one person issuing mandates only on little children, which is exactly what happened. She did this even after the Board of Commissioners said they don't support mandates, and after the governor signed the budget stating she was not to do so, and after multiple school districts within our county told her they didn't want mandates either. The issue of censure was brought in response to her disregard for any of that and her inability to properly communicate with everyone involved. Many people spoke to her ability to do her job, her character, and her history of performance. Most people aren't questioning her ability to do her job until doing her job infringes on our rights and abuses our children. While interviewed, Dr. Merkentant states, "They just fired me." No, actually, they didn't. I'm not sure why this even needs to be clarified, but her contract is up in June. The Board of Commissioners have decided to split her positions, which is how they are intended to be, and she can reapply for whichever position she enjoys doing the most. She is not fired. They did not terminate her contract. In fact, to my knowledge, she's still currently employed. That doesn't sound like getting fired to me. And if she were to reapply for one of the positions, it would still allow the county to successfully implement a succession plan for her inevitable retirement she was already planning on. Her unwillingness to do one job versus two is what will put this county in an uncomfortable transition. Just because the county decided to separate the positions does not mean she is fired or can't still do one of the jobs she's already doing. Perhaps, perhaps, maybe she could take an extra vacation with the lessened workload.
Carolyn Richards.
Hello. I want to take this time to educate my fellow citizens of St. Clair County. As I pointed out a couple weeks ago, there is a health advisory board that falls under the Board of Commissioners but oversees the Health Department. As one parent confirmed, out of 83 counties in Michigan, St. Clair County is one of only two counties who have combined these two positions. When the positions were combined in 2009, per the Health Advisory Committee FOIA'd minutes from their January 19, 2022 meeting, it was stated that the combining of the Health Officer and Medical Director positions was intended to be temporary due to budgetary concerns in 2009. In our county, the Health Officer, Dr. Merkentant, sits on the Health Advisory Board per their own bylaws and oversees the Health Department and its director, Dr. Merkentant. This is definitely a conflict of interest. There also has not been annual performance evaluations, as stated in her contract. I FOIA'd those, and they were not available. So your tax dollars are paying the annual salary of Dr. Merkentant, but who is making sure she is doing what she's supposed to be doing in a legal and constitutional manner? We pointed out last fall the fact that she was using threats and coercion for the quarantine letters to students and families, yet did not allow due process. Even after a resolution of the Board of Commissioners and a letter to the doctor requesting her to rescind the orders, she still did not rescind until her funding was threatened by the state. Per the Health Advisory bylaws, the St. Clair County Health Department shall have jurisdiction throughout St. Clair County and shall serve all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, age, sex, marital status, or handicap. So you, the people, decide. Has she targeted children? Has she disregarded special-needs children, those with handicaps, hearing, speech, and language difficulties, or learning disabilities by masking and quarantining them? What about the elderly, our most vulnerable population? What has she done to ensure the safety of that population? In addition to our enumerated rights, that are God-given rights that cannot be taken away by anyone at any time, even during a pandemic, we also have unenumerated rights. These rights are not written in the Constitution, however, they are still defended by the Supreme Court. One of those unenumerated rights is the right to body autonomy. This means that everyone, including children, has the right to autonomy and self-determination over their own body.
About 10 seconds, please.
And only the person with the right to make a decision about one's body is oneself, no one else. Yet, Dr. Merkentant, among others, have masked our children and forced schools to enforce this mandate against the will of many children. She coerced area physicians not to write medical exemptions for children to go without masks, even if they had a valid reason. She made a decision based on what data? There has been no data truthfully presented to us. We tax-paying citizens have demanded accountability in addition to the safety of our children. All of those emails and attendees that show up only when our job is threatened, I ask you, do you have children in school, a special-needs child, a child with learning disability? Are you a teacher, having to change your teaching format or not see your students' smiling faces? Do you have a child who suffers from mental illness? Do you rely on school to provide your children with a safe environment with at least two good meals because you cannot provide that at home? Do you know of a child who is abused at home and school is their only safe haven, except nobody can see the hurt on their face? We are not an angry mob of anti-maskers or anti-vaxers. We are parents and citizens that respect everyone's freedom to preserve their right of body autonomy.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll just say, we don't know what the future holds, but I look forward to some good changes for our county. I just have three quick suggestive comments just for you to consider. First, I was thought, why not invite? Because I know townships have pastors that come in for invocation. I've never heard an invocation at the Board of Commissioners meeting. Why not make that available to local pastors? I know that our founders thought it was natural to ask God to be a guest at our meetings, maybe to keep hell from coming in. It's been a rugged few months. I'm sure that you all would say, maybe amen to that. I'm not preaching right now, but second thing, with several unelected people on the broad BOC family, I would just ask, why not have somebody spiritually-minded, tempered, voiced to be included in the meetings? I know you have a business administrator, you've got legal people. Why not have somebody spiritually-minded that could maybe offer some good ideas about the elements that we're dealing with in the county? I mean, typically, over the last nine months, I felt that spiritual insight was woefully lacking in many of the decisions in the meetings. I just think for a more amiable future, that's something that you could consider. Lastly, I know this is not your duty, but there was a lot of, I think, unnecessary friction back and forth that was alluded to over the last months. I just feel that you guys are at least in a position that you could have hosted maybe a countywide discussion with criteria so that both sides could have brought forth their points, and maybe it would have created a much better environment to educate the people and to let everybody voice their opinions. I know many times I felt we came to meetings and I thought, man, we're not being heard. And it would have just been nice at times to feel like there was actually people heard. And it could have been, I think it could have been very advantageous for the community. So those are just three quick things I'll throw out here for you to chew on, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Joseph Naas.
And just to coattail off Mr. Parker, because he did such a good job, I had to put my points down a little lower. I think we need to reinforce that it wasn't when we were having this country developed, it was really what it was. There was William Bradford. There was James Edwards, who were mayors of their area and that timeframe, and yet they ran for, was involved in politics. They were governors, they were mayors, and that was Minister and people, as he said, are spiritual, but I would take it more as religious. That being said, some of the procedures, if we look at alone, as we, the people, we could be mayor, town hall-like, we could have education direct, where we're educated. So it seems like an active engagement instead of us versus you. After all, it is our county, it's our area, it is our taxes. And as a former school teacher and been in business all my life, adult life, that an effective way, engagement, and some of you remember some of this, when the CEOs across the country needed to see that it wasn't bottom-down, and they broke up like Visteon and Delphi and said, "How can we get those areas actively engaged?" So I think the procedures need to be changed to be even more effective. Last week or a month ago, that we even said here, "Oh, don't give them three minutes and let them yield their time." Right during that meeting, they said, "Let's just have them speak three minutes and not yield their time." In other words, the power grab, the power grab. We want to be effective as a community and about us. So I think some of the procedures are wide open for change. One quick point to add here is, I was citing the Wall Street Journal a couple weeks ago, and I'm just citing and paraphrasing, that 50% of the doctors today work for the institution and the government. 50% work for the patients. That's a sure lot of difference than our uncles' time.
About 10 seconds.
Okay. And we feel that the doctor and all those who wrote their letters were on the side of the institution rather than the patients. So God bless you and your family, and I hope we look at, like Mr. Parker said, some of the procedures, and thank you.
All right, I'll put it in the pile. Tracy Burgey? B.I.R. All right, I'll put you at the bottom there. Pam Binsfield.
I'm getting old. Good evening. I just wanted to give an overview a little bit of the last two years, and especially of a lot of information that's come to light from the CDC, the FDA, many news outlets, and especially what a lot of us were called during that time, conspiracy theorists. Conspiracy theorists told you COVID was a hoax. We were right. Conspiracy theorists told you the ultimate goal was endless vaccines and a digital tracking system. We were right. Conspiracy theorists told you that they were safe, cheap, and effective therapeutics that could have saved countless lives. We were right. Conspiracy theorists told you the vaccines would be ineffective and harmful, that they would cover up the data to protect the narrative. We were right. But here's the thing: Our mission isn't to gloat. Our mission isn't validation or vindication. Our mission is to help you see for the very first time. The mainstream media has knowingly lied to your face 24/7, 365 days for decades. They spend hours every evening telling you how terrible the world is, filling your mind with negativity and fear. They labeled those of us trying to help you understand as bigots, racists, and terrorists. They labeled those of us trying to help you understand as bigots, racists, and terrorists. You know that simply isn't true. They've silenced any and all dissenting opinion. You know that isn't right. Aren't you tired of being gaslighted and straight up lied to? Who has more to gain from lying to you? Your family and friends, or the people who enrich themselves through a corrupt, rigged, and immoral system that only benefits the 1%? Sorry, we will be right again. Please let this be the last time you allow yourself to be duped by people who don't care about you and are paid to lie to your face. Let this be the moment when you finally realize that it's us, we, the people, versus them, the power-hungry deceivers. We are not defined by our political affiliation. The two-party system is an illusion of choice, a brilliant yet maniacal division tactic. We are not defined by the color of our skin. We are human beings. We are one. Divide and conquer has been the method to their madness for centuries. Let this be the moment when you finally realize that humanity deserves better, that humanity deserves truth, that humanity thrives when we are united.
About 10 seconds.
That we've been deprived of that feeling for many generations. Let this be the moment when you realize why the term conspiracy theorist was invented in the first place. It may not seem like any of this applies on our lower county level, but it does. It's happening everywhere. It's happening on the school levels, it's happening on the city levels, it's happening county, state, nationwide. And it's important that all of us understand and see what is going on and what is happening, and that we all work together to make the change. And those who are not willing and want everything to be the way it is, to be corrupt, that's not what America was founded on. We are a republic, we are not a democracy, and things will change. Thank you.
I didn't have much time to prepare, so I'm going to be sort of fast. What I came here for is because I heard there were two commissioners that talked about taking away the yield option. Our country was built on freedom. Without freedom and without ownership, we have nothing. We do not have freedom. We don't have freedom if we can't speak out and address our government. Open Meetings Act is, the reason it came about is so citizens could come up and say to our government, we've got a problem, we need to change it, we need your help. Is that happening? I have to credit some of the people on this board, because I do believe they try. I've spoken to them, and I'm not going to go up against them just because it's a popular thing to do. I understand the people out here, you have something to beef about because of the mandates on the mask that was wrong. Now it's gone, so we need to move on. And the people that were charged with being violent and speaking wrong at the write-ins from the doctors and that, that's not true. I didn't see any violence in here at any meetings I've been. I've been to quite a few, I've spoken at quite a few, I've crossed swords with a couple of the commissioners. Now we're talking. Jeff can testify to that. And there's others I've crossed swords with. I've had a fight with Lisa McLean, and we're friends now in a way. But like I said, she goes off the tracks, then my fireworks and her are going to start again. So I hold nothing that cannot be changed. Don't plant your feet in cement and not expect to have problems. You have to listen to both sides, and I think both sides are doing a good job. So our important thing is this coming up election in 2022. Watch your candidates, know who they are. Don't just listen to someone, check it out yourself. You can come to the St. Clair County Republican Party for more information on candidates. That's all I can say right now. Thank you.
Mary Powell.
Hi. I wasn't going to talk tonight, so I don't really have anything. But two years ago, I remember, I was sitting at a wrestling match with tons of little kids, and everybody was, you know, hugging on everybody, and life was good. In those two years, I've learned quite a bit. First, I will check out every candidate who runs for every office in the state of Michigan from now on, including all of you. Taught me a lot about politics. Some of you I would like to see replaced. Some of you I would like to see sitting here after election. I've learned that our local newspaper is very left and doesn't like to tell the whole truth. I've learned that there is a great, absolutely great group of people that I have to support me, and we all support one another in everything that we do now. In those two years, I've seen hate. And who would have thought that a virus could cause this much hate in a community? We are not anti-vaxxers, we are not anti-maskers, we are not anti-anything except for anti-mandators. We have rights, and we deserve those rights. What I've seen from these meetings is the supporters of the good doctor calling us uneducated, calling us all sorts of nasty things. We are not that. Just because we don't have a bunch of letters after our name doesn't mean that we're uneducated. Honestly, I probably have more degrees than some of those people who like to speak those ill words of others. I've also learned that no matter what you do and what you say, our government officials don't really care. Some of you might seem like you do, but when we send emails and we get absolutely no responses or we get a generic response, shows that the people who pay you to be there don't matter to you. And that's something as commissioners that you guys should really consider going into the election season, especially if you want to continue sitting in those seats and representing the people that you're supposed to represent. You have employees getting onto social media who work for the county, who have high titles, criticizing and putting down average citizens because he thinks he can.
About 10 seconds.
That is inappropriate, and maybe that's the next one we need to discuss. Thank you.
Kim Van Back.
So first off, I'd like to thank you guys for the recent decisions you made. Thank you. For all of you here, thank you. You give me and my family hope. Folks, we've been here for two long years, two long years. I ask you not to forget what has been done to our kids. Why and how did our county's health director ever obtain the ability to hold two positions in the health department? Why and how? It's not a huge conflict of interest, and I hope we learn from our mistakes. I'd really like to have some solid factual data, not subjected to cherry picking, on the county's student percentages of increased mental health issues and suicide in the last two years. We all know of a student who has taken their life or is suffering with mental health issues in our county. Fact, these mandates played a hand in these increasing percentages that have been rising throughout the past two years, and for that matter, will potentially continue to rise. Nonetheless, these growing concerns do not stop the mandates. I would also like to know some factual, non-cherry pick data on the percentage of families that uphold their kids from the districts, including our three. At the end of the day, all that matters is faith, family, and freedom based on the Constitution. All I want is the best possible education for all students. That clearly hasn't happened the last two years, and I ask you, don't forget what has happened. Let us learn from our mistakes. Thank you.
Tracy Burgey. Tracy, you're the last one. Can't make you any more last.
I just feel like, as a mother, as a woman who has children in our schools, I feel very supported that we want to lift up our kids and make sure that we are maintaining, like from here out forward, something that's really good for our kids. I wasn't going to come up and speak, but I happened to speak to someone yesterday, and I think that sometimes people, truly out of ignorance, they don't know, and they assume things. So we should never assume, because my mom has that saying, but I can't repeat that. How we assume, what we make that? So y'all have heard that, I see. Anyway, but I just think that it's super important for us to be looking out for our children, and that's why I'm here. Because like, I would love to be home, hanging with my kids, doing it, making it happen there. But you know what? I don't want you guys to forget that I'm here and that I'm watching you guys, because we have to do better for our kids. And that's what I want, and that's what I expect from you guys. And I'm not picking out anyone in particular, but I just think it's important. And sometimes we get sidetracked on, you know, all these different things, and it's really important, at the end of the day, you know, did we represent our children? Did we say, no, no more, I'm not going to do this? You know, our kids, they have struggled. You know, I talked to my friend who's a teacher yesterday, and we were just kind of talking about where our kids are sitting, and she just said to me, oh, what grade are your girls in? And she said to me, oh, everything shut down two years ago. She said, you know, that's got to be a really tough time for your kids. And I don't mean just mine, I mean anybody's kids, right? Like, we are struggling, it doesn't matter. But she was saying that now our children are sitting so far behind because of this virus, the fear, the mongering that has been put on our children, on our people, you know? And so what I'm saying is that our kids are behind, and we need to lift them up and move them forward and put them in good situations that they can grow, and they can just be kids. Because don't we all, like, don't we all deserve to be free, right? Right? So that's what I want, and I want you to know that as much as I love hanging, I still expect you guys to do right by our kids. Thank you.
I don't have a ton to say tonight, I'm sure you're happy about that. But I did want to thank you all for your recent decision to split Merkentant's position. That shows a little good faith, and I think we all appreciate that. I did want to bring up some things that have added to her negligence. I mean, I hear a lot of people claiming how great she's been and what a great professional she's been. And there's been a lot of things that have been coming up lately, such as the milestone chart for children has changed recently. That has been, in my opinion, because of all the mandates that we've been through, the masking of children, our toddlers and babies are behind, so behind that for the first time in many years, they've had to change the milestone chart to reflect that. Not only the toddlers, our children are behind because of the school closures, the kids having to stay home because they can't wear a mask, and because Merkentant did not allow doctors to give exemptions. Not to mention the elderly. Piggybacking off from what Carolyn had to say, the elderly in nursing homes did not get to see family for over a year, could not touch them, hug them. The only way they could see them or talk to them was on the phone through a window. How would any of you like to be separated from every family member you have? Every single one of them, your children, your grandchildren, your mother? How would you like your mother to be in a nursing home and not able to even check on her to make sure she's getting cared for regularly? How would you like her to be dying alone? Because that's what I've witnessed in the last two years. Families separated, people depressed, dying, lonely. That is something I will never forget and something I probably will never forgive her for. It's a terrible thing, people not able to see smiles. Do you really realize how much a smile means to an elderly patient? It means a lot, a lot. And if I have to smile for the rest of my life and pull my mask down to show them when nobody's looking, I will do it. What about the needles for addicts that have been given out, the mobile unit that was started to exchange needles, to encourage addiction, to enable addiction? And lastly, I went to the dentist today with my son. My kids needed some dental work, and, you know, they're behind due to the COVID restrictions because of things being closed. And she said that they have had such a huge increase that they've never seen of people having cavities and dental issues because of the closures of the dentist's office, which they were deemed they were not emergency services.
About 10 seconds.
And they were quite honestly appalled that they were not considered emergency when your teeth can direct the health of your whole body. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any more citizens to be heard. Chris has some things to be read into the record here, so, Chris?
First one is from Alice Carl. I support the choice to make those two positions. It is a step into a direction where more voices and questions can be heard and answered. What I do not support is Dr. Annette Merkentant. Her fake news of being fired to try and keep this as a one job that she controls is proof that this is the right choice. Her choosing to not resign into any of these positions is her great and right. Let her go and do better. Thank you for making this two positions and making us step to the better. All it takes is just 2% more than the day before. Thank you. Jessica Schulte. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jessica Schulte. I am a St. Clair County resident and mother of two students within Port Huron area school district. I am writing to you because I am unable to attend regularly due to my work schedule. Moving forward, I would like to give my support for separating the positions of the county health director. No one person should hold both positions whether or not the positions can be easily filled. This is no different than other counties in our state. Due to the extensive drama from the pandemic, I would expect qualified professionals to be hesitant to want to apply for either of the positions posted, as it will take two valorous individuals to uphold the law and practice medicine with integrity. This is why we need to continue with the resolution already passed, and having the two-system position is completely necessary so that no one officer may work unilaterally within the system. I would also like Dr. Merkentant's poor attitude toward the resolution to separate the positions passed at the last BOC meeting to be acknowledged. It was reported by the Times Herald, when she was interviewed, she was fired, which is farthest from the truth. Her contact and salary are still active, as she may apply for one of the two positions in the future. One would think she would welcome this, be relieved she still has a job, and is grateful to not have been held accountable in court thus far. Whether or not our health director is a kind, nice person, personally thought she was acting in the best interest of the community or was just plain scared, she broke the law when she bypassed the Constitution and violated her medical oath. The county health director may provide, not force, advice, testing, and programs to assist those in the community. That is all. Anything beyond such is an overreach, period. Along that, if the county health director did not provide the ability to access those services, that too would be inappropriate and an abuse of power also. Let us continue to move forward and part ways with anyone who is not willing to uphold the Constitution of Michigan and/or the United States and protect our freedoms as citizens. This is from Vicki Ames. I am in full support of the St. Clair County Health Director, Medical Health Officer Dr. Annette Merkentant in the St. Clair County Health Department. As everyone knows, the world around us changed in a very short period of time, and COVID-19 created fear, frustration, and anxiety in everyone. It was too easy for criticism, stress- It was too easy for criticism, stress, and politics to creep in. I believe Dr. Merkentant has the education, experience, and knowledge to be our county health officer, along with her reliance on the CDC guidelines. She and her staff have worked tirelessly to keep the residents of St. Clair County safe by following science, not by following a bunch of beliefs, many of which are based upon untruths. I spoke with one of the area's leading pulmonary doctors a few weeks ago, and the doctor expressed his frustration with all the politics and misinformation surrounding COVID. He has seen much more death than you or I in the past two years. I believe the doctor knows what he is speaking of, but it makes me wonder about how much medical experience or medical education anyone on the Board of Commissioners has. Do any of you have more experience in those fields than Dr. Merkentant or the pulmonary doctor I spoke with? I do not agree with the decision the Board made at their last meeting to split the Chief Health Department position in two. In my opinion, it wasn't broken, it didn't need fixing. Health concerns are challenging enough in the current climate without making things worse and trying to fill two positions. In nearby Sanolac County, the public health director has to cover four counties. Is this what we want to end up with? How many people are even qualified for these positions, interested in our area, and the pay for these positions here? And with the knowledge of what happened with Dr. Merkentant, public health is supposed to be apolitical, and it is clearly not in St. Clair County. I predict that splitting the chief health position will turn out to be an unwise decision. I am thankful that after weighing all sides of the issue and seeing the big picture, Georgia Baldwin, the Commissioner who represents me, voted against splitting this position. Thank you, Dr. Merkentant, and the St. Clair County Health Department for your dedication. There are many, including myself, who do appreciate you." This is from Diane Horn. "I feel Dr. Merkentant has done an exceptional job during this pandemic and has kept our schools open, which every parent should be grateful for, especially those Board members with children. It's so easy to criticize someone when not one of you is qualified to fill her shoes. Dr. Merkentant has given us weekly COVID updates for the county and has kept the schools informed as well. We should all be praising her for doing such an outstanding job. She is well qualified and is deserving of her salary. Our county has gone through a rough time, and we all have either lost loved ones or know people who have in the last two years. Let's all pull together, be a little kinder, and support each other. We have a more serious issue in this county today that truly concerns me. There are no intervention mental health facilities for our younger children who need long-term care, who are suffering and falling through the cracks. This should be your priority." This is Sandy Mangan. "My name is Sandy Mangan, and I am the nurse practitioner at the St. Clair County Teen Health Clinic. I began my career in 2009 with Dr. Merkentant as collaborating physician and mentor. Over the years, she has impacted my career in ways that cannot be described by words. I have been honored and blessed to cross paths with her. There is no way for me to ever repay her for her kindness and guidance. One of the most important lessons I use daily is to do no harm, step back, listen, and have the client as the main focus. I can assure you that Dr. Merkentant guides her practice by the same standard. Regarding your decision pertaining to Dr. Merkentant, the client is the community of St. Clair County. Throughout the 13 years, and especially the past two years, she has had the entire community as her focus. She bases every project, decision, or order on this premise: do no harm and focus on the client, community. Our second value that she shares with me is that clients who seek services need someone to hear their voices, understand their needs, break down their barriers, and offer them a hand up. The Health Department services' clients come from all socioeconomic classes, those employed and unemployed, babies through adulthood, those that are sick, and those that just want to stay well. Many of you have benefited from services provided by the Health Department. The only way to know what a client or community needs is to take the time and really listen. Listen to all the voices, not just the ones you want to, not just the loud ones, but listen to the quiet, meek voices. They have a right to be heard and have their needs met, too. You see, listening is only a part of communicating. Communication takes two willing parties. Both parties have a voice, and both must be willing to listen. Even though the parties may disagree, they can still work together and achieve great things if they are willing to listen to each other. I respectfully urge you to reconsider your actions. Place your focus on your client, all community members of St. Clair County. Step back and listen. Listen to all the voices, experience the barriers, address the needs, but most of all, hear the quiet voices. Allow the work of the Health Department team to continue. Care for this community with their leader has provided unshakable guidance." This is Rebecca Paul. "I am a resident of Port Huron since 2012 and an employee of the St. Clair County Health Department since 2018. I am writing today to express my disappointment in the majority of the Board with the recent vote of 4-2 to not renew Dr. Annette Merkentant's contract and to split her position in two. This move has been unsuccessfully attempted in other counties all over the country, most with larger populations and likely a higher salary than St. Clair County can even offer. For example, Oakland County, Michigan, has reposted their attempt to do this multiple times over the last year with no qualified applicants. St. Clair County will most likely have a harder time filling this than counties that offer more financially and location-wise. Dr. Merkentant has worked in this position for over a decade focusing on the health and wellness of this entire county, and only when COVID-19 became a politicized mess did her job performance come into question wrongly. Dr. Merkentant and the entire Health Department has been the last two years combating a novel virus, meaning it's new, meaning there isn't much information available, meaning that information is constantly evolving, meaning the scientific method steps we learned in fourth grade are still happening in real time around us. We joked at the Health Department that our word of the year was pivot, because that's what we've all been doing under Doc's leadership. She has an undeniable passion for the health and wellness of everyone she comes across. Having the majority of the Board constantly coming for Dr. Merkentant's work has been a kick to every public healthcare worker in this county. There are very few health professionals in this county that disagree with Dr. Merkentant's decisions over the last couple of years. These people may not have necessarily always liked them, but they did not disagree with them because they understand why we've done and what we've had to do for public health. The few that did disagree seem to be the loudest. It reminds me of something I learned when I was very young, that common sense ain't that common, and that the weakest are usually the loudest in the room. Most of this county's Board has proven that as well. Certain Board members should be ashamed of themselves and their lack of human decency all because of a few people saying they would possibly not reelect them into their position. I honestly am not sure how some of them sleep soundly at night. I want to thank the two Commissioners who voted the correct way. I want to thank Dr. Merkentant for all her hard work, and let her know it has been an honor working under her direction at the Health Department. I would ask for the Board to reconsider their decision, instead of listening to the same 50 people that show up to these meetings, listen to the actual voices in the county, the silent majority that is trying to get through these trying times, the ones that are working every day through this pandemic, and the ones that are teaching their children empathy and decency." My name is Mary Spencer. "I had planned to be here today to address the Board, but unfortunately, I am currently in quarantine because although the numbers are down, I caught COVID this week. I am a retired St. Clair County Public Health Nurse, having worked 26 years in various Health Department positions, the last 15 in communicable diseases and immunization as the program coordinator, giving me ample time working under Dr. Merkentant. During that time, I can tell you, we worked well together, although I did not always agree with her policy. Never once did I not respect her or feel she was doing what she thought she had to do was the best for our Health Department and community. When things are going well, public health goes unnoticed, but when a pandemic hits, as we are experiencing, things quickly change. Everyone has an opinion and becomes an expert except for the experts. Many decisions were made after extensive meetings. Those decisions were made knowing full well many would not be popular, but public health is not a popularity contest, and sometimes, for the greater good, we have to do the hard thing. I find it totally unbelievable that we have the great fortune of having the experience and expertise of Dr. Merkentant in our community, and the Board does not recognize her value. She is not going to be replaced at the drop of a hat. I urge the Board to reconsider your decision before it's too late." This one is Kathleen Madidge. "I have worked at the Health Department for over 13 years and have been a St. Clair County resident all my life. I am writing this letter in response to your decision about Dr. Merkentant. I have never been a political person, but unfortunately, it's hard not to be with what has happened with MAGA and COVID. These two things should have never been intertwined, but again, unfortunately, they have. I came to one Board meeting, and what I seen was astonishing. In all seriousness, I had to laugh at some of the things being said. I am quite familiar with the conspiracy theories, and I thought there was no way the Board can fall for these persons' so-called research. I thought wrong. Not only do we have non-medical persons spouting unclaimed facts, using that term loosely, we have a chiropractor, Mike McClellan from Yale, giving us medical advice, and let me just reiterate the word chiropractor. I mean, if we..."
Keep down, please.
"I mean, if we had an epidemic of sprained knees, then he might be the person to listen to. He came into this meeting talking about his first interaction with Dr. Merkentant and how she wanted to go into Yale schools and teach the boys how to use condoms, using bananas. He was horrified. I do believe his response was something along the lines of 'no, not in our schools.' I was born and raised in Yale, and if any school system could use this type of education, it is Yale. While I watched the meeting, I looked at Greg McConnell and thought, hopefully, he has some McConnell, or he has some sense. His mother was a nurse, and was a nurse for probably one of the strictest doctors I have ever met, Dr. Klein. Never would my mother have gone into his practice and told Dr. Klein he didn't know what he was talking about, or questioned any medical advice he gave her. So I watched him have a private conversation with Mike McClellan, my heart sank. I thought, nope, he's a sellout, too. Now, so not even sure how his voice counts, since he represents areas in which he doesn't live, but that's another can of worms. During the last two years, Dr. Merkentant and our team at the Health Department have been going above and beyond. There are times we were working seven days a week, and majority of those days were 12-hour days, while the Board members and citizens of the county went about their lives. I'm not complaining. Watching all of us come together as a well-oiled machine was amazing to watch. We had it easy compared to the medical staff at hospitals across the country, who wouldn't go home to their families because they didn't want to infect them with this novel virus. They washed patients that, having to say goodbye to their loved ones via FaceTime. I can't even fathom what toll that took on them, while people like Marcy McClellan sit in front of their computers, regurgitating useless data and putting them in pretty little binders, telling everyone on the Board how not only the Health Department, apparently all medical staff across the country, that we don't know what we are doing. What I learned from the Board meeting is if you go up to the podium and threaten the Board members with them losing their jobs, you can get your way. What a great thing to teach our kids, bullying works. The Board members must be really proud of themselves. Let's not teach today's youth that sometimes you have to be unpopular and do what's right, but at least when you go home at night, you have a clear conscience. Shame on the four of you that voted against Dr. Merkentant because she didn't bend to your winds. Just because none of you have a backbone doesn't mean the rest of us should have to suffer because of your cowardice."
Please keep down.
Marilyn Tippa. "Kudos to Dr. Annette Merkentant. Every parent in St. Clair County should be thanking her. Because of her decision to implicate the mask mandate again, every child has been attending in-person school classes. She did the best job she could under COVID circumstances, even though certain Commissioners had some secret agenda. Her communication on the mask mandate to the Board is a lame excuse to censure her or fire her. Even the Port Huron area school district agreed with her mandate. Like I stated prior, has to be another agenda to further the Board's action, besides costing more money. Yikes." And the last one. This is from Ashley Costello. "I realize these last two-plus years have been difficult on all of us. Lives have been lost, work interrupted, businesses have struggled, some have closed, kids have missed time in the classroom and extracurricular activities. We've missed out on cherished gatherings with family and friends, our collective mental health has suffered. To date, 807 people in our county have died from COVID-19. Before we even had our first case of COVID-19 in St. Clair County, the employees of the Health Department got to work. For the last two-plus years, they have worked tirelessly and have gone to tremendous efforts to minimize the impact of the pandemic on our community and save lives. They've acted in accordance with their mission to promote and protect public health. They have followed the guidance of the most trusted state and federal scientific and medical experts. They have collaborated with community partners, they have kept the public informed and remained accessible and transparent. They have worked long hours, evenings, weekends, on their feet, or giving so many vaccines their hands would cramp. They have responded to the various changing needs of our community during this difficult time. Let me remind you of some of the measures they have taken. The creation of the COVID-19 hotline to field the thousands of calls and emails from the community, regular press releases with important updates, daily social media updates, the addition of the COVID-19 information hub on their website with data dashboard, collection and distribution of needed PPE when it was in shortage, gathering of community resources to assist families struggling to find food or other assistance, working with CMH to address growing mental health concerns, providing weekly live video updates to address questions from the community, tedious contact tracing to limit the spread, testing services, holding massive vaccine clinics to swiftly and efficiently vaccinate our community. The work of the St. Clair County Health Department in response to this pandemic is extremely commendable, and to great thanks to the leadership of Dr. Merk. You should be giving that woman a raise. Your decision to divide the Health Officer/Medical Director position as a means to remove Dr. Merkentant in order to punish her for a decision that was carefully made based on sound evidence, and in order to protect the public, is not only a dishonorable use of your political position, but also a slap on the face to Dr. Merkentant, her dedicated team of employees, and the citizens of this county who have made countless sacrifices to protect their families and help end this pandemic. I am especially disappointed in Commissioner Bohm, who Dr. Merkentant communicated directly with regarding the mask mandate, who admitted he failed to pass on the information to his fellow Commissioners, and yet still voted on a resolution to essentially remove Dr. Merkentant over a failure of communication that was false. I hope you understand that your actions have interrupted the important work of a passionate team of people and have disappointed and embarrassed many citizens of this county."
Okay. We are going to move on with updates. Just so if anybody leaves, I'm going to be talking later in the Ways and Means regarding our next meeting, which is scheduled for St. Patrick's Day. For those of you that don't know, I'm the one that does all the music in St. Clair. I raise the money, I'm in charge of the events. We actually have a big St. Patrick's Day event coming up, and I am the one putting the event on, so I am going to be tied up that entire day down there. So we'll talk, perhaps if it works for the rest of the Commissioners, George is on her way, she sent me a text, so I'm going to be bringing that up later, so if we move the date, or if we don't, so be it. But I know I'm not going to be available, so I'm just letting you guys know that. So any other updates regarding? So conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
Old business. On Forest, item eight, community mental health board reappointments.
Could move this be sent to the full Board?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, item eight, other human services, none. Nine, information only, item eight, Health Department points of interest.
Make motion, receive and file.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, adjournment.
Make motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a five-minute bathroom break, if you don't mind. Let's take a five-minute bathroom break if you don't mind.
Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. Thank you. I see no additions to the agenda. So if nobody has any, if we could have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard under the Judiciary Public Safety? Seeing none. Updates?
I just have one update. We had a central dispatch meeting and there was talk about the Lakeport. There's a, the Lakeport Tower. They want to get a new simulcast put on and there was some prices given, which I think it kind of was astonishing. We had a price a couple of years ago of like close to $500,000 and the price today came in at $950,000. So it almost sounds like it's a new tower that they're presenting and we don't need a new tower. We need to have new jewelry put on the top of the tower. So there's a group in, who is going to kind of take a lead? I guess Justin.
Yeah, emergency management.
Emergency management was going to kind of take a little bit of a lead and see if there's any way we can get some help from some of the money that's, that's available out there to use. So he's going to look into it just to see where we're at. It would help that far part of our area with radio. We have no cell service or good radio service at the State Park in Lakeport. And they feel that that would be a big benefit for our responders to be able to communicate in that area. So they're looking into it. So.
It should be a county-wide.
$950 is a.
Needs to be a county-wide look because we've got some huge holes in the south. And that's some of the issues with the paperweight. I mean, the pagers that I carry, you know, they just don't work in spots. And my hometown, my own house, it bongs half the, you know, at least a section of the times.
Right.
It's a whole system-wide, needs to have a whole system-wide look into it. And it's a state system. It's just the number of towers we have.
Right.
As compared to.
And it is a state tower out there.
Yes, it is.
So.
Is that being discussed on a, on the fire chief level as well? Chief Harrington from Birchville had reached out to me several months ago and said, I want to meet. And then we, he's never come back. So I didn't know if it changed to a bigger.
They moved the fire chief's meeting to days and I don't go to it.
Okay.
But yes, that's, he was.
Okay.
He was involved in the talks on this. And I think it came through Tom Koenig that.
It needs to be a bigger.
Well, they're, yeah, that they just, that they needed to address some issues out.
Not just per municipality, but overall.
Yes. Yep. Okay.
Greg.
Yes.
Yep. Jeff White at our planning commission last night. He got approved and we're going to have a new EMS station on Riley, in Riley Township on M19. And there were some variants that he needed to have put in the garage. But that's going to hopefully be done this year. But he's going to get the building and we're going to have new ambulance service right in Riley now, associated with Lennox. He also brought up that we're going to be addressing, I guess, in the near future, but we've had discussions with Ken Cummings, potentially a county-wide millage. So definitely want to have some more info on that because I'm not sure where I'd stand on that until I get more information. But that was brought up last night.
Good. Okay. Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
There is no old business tonight under new business. Item Seven A, Contract Approval for Synergy Engineering. It is a air filtration system for animal control. I don't remember the number, $12,200 or something.
Yeah, our new buildings and grounds director, Darren Kester, is in the audience if you want to hear from him.
Would you like to?
Motion to send it to the full board.
Support. So we have motion, support, send to full board. Would you? Yeah, we'll give you your claim to fame.
Hello, board? That was fine. Thank you. Yes, yeah, I recommend that we get, vote that our, support the four fans that are for the animal filter. Right now, they have none. So this will be a great upgrade. And it is a requirement of the animal shelter to have clean and filtered air. Right now, they do not. So that's we, I got three bids and they were the best one.
Does anybody have any questions? This was pretty cut and dry, but if you're here, we.
You've got five more seconds.
Somebody else can have it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So this is to send to full board. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Seven B, Raise the Age 2023. This is an intent to apply for a grant. Seventeen-year-olds are going to be moved to juvenile court instead of adult court. And this is a grant application that's going to be sent in to pay for the extra work that's going to be done in juvenile. So we need to send this to full board.
Motion to send it to full board.
Support.
Motion support. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nay?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. Any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none. Motion, receive and file?
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Eleven, Adjourned. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
When he does the public hearing for the, we do that before we get into the.
Yes. Yes.
You got to say it three times if there's anyone to speak. I mean, correct me if.
Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Environmental, Public Works Committee to order. Do we do a roll call first?
Public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing for the proposed development and improvement at the specified parks and submissions of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund and Recreation Passport Fund Grant Applications. We're having a public hearing for the proposed development and improvements specified parks and submissions of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund and Recreation Passport Fund Grant Application. We're going to open the public hearing for the proposed development and improvements at the specified parks and submission of Michigan Department of Natural.
You have to ask if there's anybody.
Oh, each time?
Yeah, you don't read it three times.
Is there anybody that'd like to address it? All right, now I'll do number two again.
You just call.
Yep.
Anybody wishing to address it?
Oh.
Second time.
Anybody wishing to address? Anybody wishing to address?
Yes.
It's a formality for submission.
Anybody wishing to address? Thanks for that clarification.
Close the public.
Closed. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes. Item B, additions, deletions. I see nothing.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens to be heard on the Environmental Public Works Committee? Go ahead.
You can do it after. Just, I just need it to include in the agenda packet.
Just real quick. I live in Fort Grashit next to a drainage ditch and they were supposed to come in and remove all the trees and redo the ditch. You probably know what one I'm talking about. And that didn't happen. I guess they changed their mind. But meanwhile, a lot of these trees are falling over and some of them are real close to my fence. If they fell, they'd hit my house. A lot of them have fallen. They're crisscrossing over this drainage ditch. And I'm wondering if, I don't know, is it the drain commission that's responsible? Is it the mall? Because I've been told the mall's responsible for the trees. I don't know who is. But I just think somebody should come clean it up and maybe take down some of the tall trees that look, that creak and sway.
Right. So I'll get ahold of you tomorrow.
Okay.
Maybe I can come out and take a look and then.
Okay.
I'll figure out who needs to be contacted. Maybe they all need to be contacted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any updates from commissioners? Seeing none. Conceptual initiatives?
None.
Seeing none. No old business, new business. Number one is the drain commissioner's annual report.
Make a motion, send that to full board.
Support.
All in favor? Or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the landfill paving project.
Make a motion, send that to full board.
Support. Any questions?
Matt's here if anybody.
Matt is here if anybody does have any question. He did receive three bids. The low bid was right in the 56K range. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C, Contract Approval Request for Fishbeck Engineers for the Goodell's County Park. Nancy is here also. These next several things are going to be on.
That's my district, so I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Support.
Nancy, why don't you get up there? Because we're going to have, have you do some explaining on some of this grant stuff and everything else. So.
Does anybody have questions of Nancy on this motion?
Depends on what she says.
Nancy, have you dealt with Fishbeck before?
I have not personally, but the county has worked with them before. So.
I have too. They're really good.
I've worked with them before. They're good people.
I'm not personally, but.
I was in on the interview process when we, I, what did we do? We picked a certain group of different, and they, I thought they were, they were good.
Yes.
But I just didn't know.
Are the qualified vendors?
Yeah, they're qualified.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D is Resolution 2022-04 for the Columbus, Michigan
Natural Resource Recreation Passport Grant Application.
Motion to send to full board?
Support.
You want to talk a little bit about what you're applying for there, Nancy, and I guess kind of what the passport grants are?
Yes. So we obviously put in for multiple on each one of these projects. The passport grant is the little P that everyone pays for, for the state parks. And that money goes into a separate pot than the trust fund grant. So we put in for three developmental grants and you can't get both. But we figured to put them in both to see which one we're the most competitive in. So that's why we had all three of these projects. We have one at Columbus, which you know, we've already done the first nine holes and Bendick family has done a donation to that. These funds would go towards finishing that project. We also have one to the concession stand that many user groups use at Goodell's. And the third one is the North Channel parking lot area in the trailhead there. These grants take a long time to get. So we wanted to obviously get ourselves in the running for some of these funds as we start to look at the North Channel and some of the things happening there. So.
Did they change the threshold originally? I think these were $300,000 developmental grants. Are these up to $500,000 now?
The, the federal land and water went, that theirs went up, but not the trust fund grant at this point. There's a lot of meetings surrounding the 150 million that was allocated for local parks. And we should know more about that coming up. But as of right now, the threshold's still at 300.
Yeah, they actually, I was, when I was at the DNR, I was in Lansing three, actually twice in Lansing. And we were downtown Detroit pitching the Marine City Marina project. And the amount of money, it's basically the interest produced of the money is then spent. Last year, they had a, you know, record year in the stock market. So usually the target's around 25 million, give or take. And they, I think they instantly put in 50 million. The fund made like 84. And it's really one of the things after we met with some of the other things. These communities need to get grants. Okay? And that's part of Nancy, why we brought the grant writer on to assist because they just, I'm not picking on Goodell's or, I'm sorry, Riley, or, you know, these other small communities. You just don't have that level of expertise, right? But I mean, it was literally, if you submit it, you got money.
Yeah.
And it was like, all right, we got another 20 million to spend. I mean, I watched the whole thing unfold. It was, you know, it was like, you need to make sure you get with your communities and get these things in.
Yeah.
They were funding all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. I totally agree with you. I think it's more like capacity, right? Like it's having enough time to put all these together. So Kim has been trying to get as many to work with. And it's, you know, we did get some of the others in the county to do that. But I agree with you. And we're here to help if other people need help.
It's still very long-term.
Very.
Very, very long. Because we. It's 18-month kind of stuff. But if you don't submit, you don't. Never gonna, I mean.
You have to get in early.
Actually going and talking and watching this whole process, how it played, played out. And it's the first time I've ever sat through it. Like I said, two meetings in Lansing and then one in Detroit. And then they were just, I mean, they were funding, I'll say everything, but they were funding almost everything. So.
And you're right, it is, I mean, it's a good two-year process. But if you plan ahead, you know, especially right now. So.
All right. Anybody else got any questions for Nancy on item D?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, Resolution 22-05, Columbus, Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant Application.
So moved. Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Resolution 22-06, Goodell's, Goodell's Michigan Natural Resource Recreation Passport Grant Application?
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Resolutions 22, 2022-07, Goodell's Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant Application?
Make a motion.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Resolution 20, 2022-08, North Channel Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant Application?
Make a motion, send to full board.
Support.
Nancy, quick question for you. Is it, is this the house down there? The North Channel? Do you know? The property. Okay. So this is the final, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. The other one actually got scored out, number two, the, the other piece we're looking for acquisitions. That would not actually come before us until October-ish, if I'm not mistaken.
We should have an agreement on that, too. We've already, I ordered that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Ask that already? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item I, The Gypsy Moth, Despair Suppression Program and Aerial Spray, RFP.
Make the motion.
I, I would support. Are we going to do this motion for final action?
So it would be two.
It'd be two separate.
I think today we talked about doing a final action for how much we're going to cover on a county and then expect municipalities and then move to the full board, the actual contract.
So depending on what the board decides this evening, on the cost share, if, in follow-up conversations with the vendor this afternoon, their timeline is a little quicker than we had anticipated, that they need data because they do need different FAA approvals for the spray blocks. So if the board would like to do final action tonight, then that would be helpful. If not, we could still certainly do it on the 17th if you're not comfortable moving forward yet tonight.
Let's just talk a little bit about, so I did not know what a gypsy moth was.
Spongy moth.
Last March.
Yeah, we can't use gypsy anymore.
April, May, whatever, when my phone started ringing off the hook because somebody was handing my phone number out. And I went to, you know, I went to look at different, all over the county. I was all over looking at these things. And we definitely have an issue. Big problem, right? Certain spots are way worse than others, you know, as you can see in the particular areas. So we put a group together. Georgia's my gypsy moth czar, I like to refer to her as. Put around that particular group, working with the friends of library, getting a very comprehensive plan, inventories. You know, we did, we did, we did a lot of different steps to get to the point of identifying, you know, the areas and so on and so forth. One of the things today, we had a meeting, Georgia, myself, Greg, with a lot of the township officials. You can look and say, oh, okay, well, this issue, you look in Clyde Township, they have the worst problem with it, right? You could say, you know what, that's not in my area. Forget it. Don't worry about it, so on and so forth. But what happens is these things spread. So once a day they're in Clyde Township, the next year they're in the neighboring township. And the next year, they continue to, they have running cycles and stuff. So some of the township. So, some of the townships are way more prepared to be able to address this, this program has to be implemented May. I mean, we have to decide to do this now, they have to get the spraying program.
Spray happens in May.
Yeah, we, we would need a decision from the board on aerial spraying, spraying in March, otherwise the vendor would not have enough time to get the proper approvals.
So, listening to some of the township officials, some of them are way ahead of the curve, they've been on top of it, but I would say the majority are probably behind the curve, right? And they don't even know if they would be willing to participate, they, to get to their board meetings, to do this stuff, and for them to try to get their act together in that short of time period, they did not have a level of confidence, because I posed that question to them, do you think you could get this together in that time period? One or two of them can, just because they've been on it, right? But the others ain't gonna happen. So, if we decided to try to do something, if we said we were going to pay for half of it, the township's gotta go back and figure it out, I don't think the townships are gonna figure it out in that short a period of time.
Not this year.
Yeah, not for this year, right? And then, spray's not gonna happen, we're gonna have a lot more damage, you know, so on and so forth. So, just me talking out loud, I would propose that we would look at, this would be the year that we would step in and we would pay for the spraying, and then put the townships on notice that you're going to, you know, we would, we would have some further discussion, how we wanna participate moving forward, so on and so forth. But I'm afraid of if we're gonna just say we're going to try to put, A, this burden back on the townships, these are a lot of small townships, you know, Dave, I mean, some of these guys, this is budget busting.
Your chance, yeah.
Yeah, this is budget busting stuff for these guys, and just for them to even execute it, I'm more concerned about the execution piece of it, to be quite honest. And, and this is no fault to anybody here, it just, like I said, this got dropped on their lap by the time you do the inventories, by the time, and this is ultimately getting a spraying program put in place that St. Clair County does not have, nor in 18 years on this board have I ever had a gypsy moth issue brought to me. You go to Roscommon, you go to some of these other areas, they have annual spray programs, it's established, it's built out, I just think the county's gonna have to step up and get this off the ground to move, that's, that's just my observation.
So, is this a cycle, or is it gonna have to be sprayed every year?
So, the, what, what I think we've done a really great job with the Friends of the St. Clair River and MSUE this year, is set up the program so that annually, it's surveyed, properties are surveyed to make sure that we don't get to where we are today. There may be years where there's very little spraying, there may be years where there's no spraying, but you have to survey the year prior, so you know if you need to spray the following spring. So, so that's the program that, that was built this year, moving forward, it'll be a lot less expensive annually, because there were, there was a lot of the legwork that was done this year that we, you know, the systems are built, so it'll just be a matter of inputting things. But from a, from the township's, well, the municipality standpoint, I think the fear is, because we are in the middle of a significant infestation, and it could be anywhere from, you know, if it started a year or two ago, could go as many as five years, if we're not able to spray in all of the areas that have been identified, you know, if a township either wasn't willing or wasn't able to pay that, then the spray won't be as effective countywide, and we could have a bigger problem next year. So, you know, my, my takeaway from today's meeting was, if, if, because we're all sitting on extra funds that hopefully we'll never, ever see again, but we have them, so if, if it's, if we're able to do it, because if you go back to some of these individual boards and they don't have consensus and aren't willing to do it, then I'm concerned about the efficacy of this year. So, moving forward though, depending on how we, we choose to set up cost sharing from here on out, each municipality has at least the next budget, you know, fiscal year budgeting to be prepared, you know, because they may choose to do like a, if the county is 50, a town, a municipality is 25, and they special assess their residents 25, you know, something like that, but none of that could be done by the time it's built.
This year.
Right, so those are my concerns.
Well, in order to lock in something right now, too, I mean, if, if they haven't already brought it up in front of their boards, if we wait till the 17th, their next board meeting, they might not even get this till April, we need to spray sometime in May, and, I mean, depending on weather, it could be early in May, it may be closer to June or into June, but, I mean, we just can't take those chances.
Because we could have an early spring.
Exactly.
Weather-wise.
Hope so.
I got a few things. You're looking at 508,000 or 509,000 roughly? Yep.
Well, so, actually, we heard from Macomb County's MSU extension on the city of Memphis, as you know, Memphis crosses Macomb County and St. Clair County, so you can see asterisk on there, they initially told us there was 400 acres that are not on our report because they were surveyed by Macomb County. We did get further clarification this afternoon that it's actually 247 of those acres are in St. Clair County that are not included in the total, but if the board does move forward, I would suggest we include those in the total for the portion that is included in St. Clair County and Memphis. So, that would be another 23,465 to the total.
And we can use ARP funds for this?
You can use American Rescue Plan Acts for this, to the extent that we have lost revenue, which, which we do, we could cover this.
Sure.
And then for the county properties, we can use the ARP funds based on parks maintenance, because they're all parks, right? The, the six, or the, the 65 acres that's county land?
So, for county land, the board could choose to use the Rescue Plan Act funds, or that could also be funded by the parks manager, it could go either way.
So, we would potentially spray 247 acres that's in St. Clair County, that's part of the city of Memphis?
That's correct, yes.
And the rest of Memphis, because they're only a mile square anyways, so there's only a 640 acres total for this, and that they're affected that bad in the city?
They said 400 acres total, and 247 of those were St. Clair County, we have not gotten the final maps yet, however, we do know 247 would be the worst case, so if the board chooses to approve this with a not-to-exceed amount, those figures and those spray blocks will be further audited.
So, roughly 40,000 more than what's already here, got the math, potentially this could be approaching 550,000.
532.
Okay. Yeah, I was doing the whole 400, okay.
Worst case.
Um, and from the list you have here, I think you only have three charter townships on this list. What's gonna happen with all the general law townships, with the rare exception, is that they have to have a meeting before the end of this month to approve the budget and the fund, or spending for that, normally it's gonna be right about March 28th, I know what Riley's gonna be, but they're not gonna address this in April, it has to be on their budget for this next fiscal year, so any contribution that they're gonna do, or any assistance with this, it's gonna have to be given to them, and it's gonna have to be improved before this month is out, and every general law township does that as a matter of business, so they have a special budget meeting at the end of the month to approve the budget. What are we trying to get from the funds from these townships, what kinda cost sharing?
We have. I'm not proposing any cost sharing.
That, that's a decision of the board this evening, that we, that we hope to get a decision on to move forward, so.
That's why we would like to do the 100%, because there's, it's just not gonna happen otherwise.
Right, exactly, I, I agree with that.
If we say we're gonna do 50/50, we're not gonna catch them in time to get this done, and then we're gonna miss out on spring, some areas.
Well, you have Lynn Township, I can see Lynn potentially saying, you know, we're not gonna help assist anyways, because they got a very tight budget, they're under a quarter million dollars to run the whole township, so, and some of the bigger townships will have no issue with it, like Fort Grashit. I know Clyde Township, when he was at the meeting, the supervisor was willing to, a lot of money, so I think Clyde will, but I think if we start picking and choosing who's gonna assist and who isn't, that's not a good path to go down either.
Exactly, and, and I talked to Ernie today, and this afternoon, and Ernie said, you know, we're grateful for everything the county has done, and he said, if there's any help that we get, we're gonna be very appreciative, but he said, we, we will do something if the county even chooses not to, they're prepared to do something, they don't know what it would be.
They are way ahead of everybody else.
Right.
I mean, big time.
So.
So, areas that are gonna get sprayed were determined by everybody calling in for the data that was collected, is that?
So. Yeah, that's it. Kristen from the Friends of the St. Clair River is here, so I think she would probably be best to answer some of these questions.
Kristen, do you? Do you wanna go to the podiums for the microphone?
Please. So, thank you, commissioners, the, the reports that we collected over the summer and fall related to gypsy moth caterpillar issues gave us a starting point, but what we did is used those addresses as places to go to look for gypsy moth egg masses, and so what those are, the gypsy moth lays their eggs in late summer, those eggs stay through the whole winter, they hatch out in the spring, and that's what causes the defoliation and the caterpillar mass. So, in the fall, we do egg mass surveys, everyone that has a gypsy moth program does it about the same time, and they're looking for the same thing, we look for the egg masses, and judging by the number of egg masses and how close they are together, and the size of them, that gives us a good forecast for how bad the outbreak's gonna be the following year. So, that's, that's what we did in the fall, is our field team went out and surveyed egg masses. We surveyed about 5,200 acres for gypsy moth egg masses, and most of the properties that we surveyed look like they're gonna have a big problem again in 2022. So, unfortunately, it didn't collapse in one year.
Are there any other questions, Kristen?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On any of these municipalities, could they refuse to get sprayed?
Yes, they could, that, yeah.
And the individual property, property owners will have an option.
Well, I'm just saying, addressing your point, if we don't do it countywide, potentially we're gonna have another outbreak, and again, I'm the oldest commissioner here now, and Gary, I've seen gypsy moths, because I've been here forever, since 67 anyways, and I've seen it, they come and go. Even if we spray, somewhere down the road, this is gonna happen again, that's just the nature of gypsy moths.
Yeah, so they say that, it depends on who you ask, some people say, some scientists say, seven to 10 years is the outbreak cycle, we got lucky in St. Clair County, it was 20 years, so.
Okay, are there any other questions for Kristen? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, do I have a motion, support?
No.
Okay.
We, we did have a motion.
Yeah, you had a motion and a second.
Well, the motion was just a motion.
We didn't say for what.
For final?
I would make, I would make the motion for final action to cover the entire cost of the program.
You have to remove your motion, your first motion first.
The most, first motion didn't actually say anything, so it's fine.
I, I would make the motion that we cover the cost of the program.
Support.
We got motion and support?
This is for final action?
So, could we please put in a not-to-exceed amount, so our purchasing has direction?
Not to exceed 550.
Right, little contingency on there.
Because you just said it was 532, right?
I mean, I was gonna say 533, but 550 is fine, too.
Well, and when, Kristen, when you put this together, this was a worst-case scenario, there is a chance that this number, so Memphis threw us off a little bit because that added some, that was like as of this morning, and then since that meeting, we've come.
If you have to come back.
Plus 400, minus 247, but there's, there's built-in area around some of this acreage, so it could very well go down.
If you gotta come back to amend the number at a later date, that's nothing.
And just for the record, the cost is $94.79 per acre.
To clarify, so are you approving the contract as well, or just the cost share?
There is no cost share.
But, that's, yeah, that's what I mean, the 100%.
The motion to not require a cost share for 2022.
Right.
Can, can we add for 2022?
But are we also the contract?
We don't have a contract.
We don't have one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that is true, we don't have the, we don't have the physical contract yet with ALs.
Bring that back to the, because actually, I'm gonna be talking about changing the date here.
So, what we can do, though, is we can give the vendor a letter of intent to award, so we can start the process, even though we don't have formal contract approvals, so that won't necessarily slow down the timeline.
And I think the biggest thing was to make sure that the municipalities knew what they might have to come up with within the next couple of days, so I think that was, that's what they asked for in the meeting today, was what their share potentially would be.
Let me clear, this motion is just to approve the funding for it, and then we're gonna potentially have the contract at the full board meeting.
Correct.
That is correct.
Because this is committee meeting, and it's too late to add it to the agenda, that'll be revised or something at the next meeting for the full board, for final action on a potential contract that we didn't talk about at the committee meeting level?
So, so when we've done RFPs in the past and award a, a contract to a vendor, then the actual final contract comes back to full board, so that is the standard process, you don't always see, it, it's our basic contract language, so, and our standard template.
Okay, everybody satisfied? Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Maybe, yes.
Commissioner Vandenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes. Item eight, Smith Creek Landfill Activity Report.
Make the motion.
Support.
Questions on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other environmental public works? Item 10, Information Only, the monthly parks and recs, financial documents, and the 2022 Embridge Pipeline Right-of-Way Maintenance.
Make motion, receiving file.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Receiving file?
It's moved.
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Vandenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. All right, item two, additions, deletion, changes to the agenda, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve agendas presented.
Support.
I got a question, so if we were going to propose a potential date change for our next meeting, would we do that under new business? We were gonna add that?
So, you'd have to add it to the agenda?
So, would we have to add that to?
That would be the proper way to do it.
Potential, potential date change, so that we can discuss it.
I would make a mo, I would.
Well, if I could, and because of discussion, you made the motion, but you can easily do that with 18 hours' notice, if we wanted to change our 17th, you can do it for standard practice, you can make a, an announcement within 18 hours of a meeting, and just do it that way if we wanted to do it.
However, we gotta, I wanna be able to talk about it, and see what.
Well, he's doing a potential, and.
That's fine, just, we can, we can talk about it.
Whatever you think, Mr. Gary.
From a staffing standpoint, and department heads, and getting agenda items, those deadlines are pretty set, so if you are gonna change that date, 18 hours' notice isn't really enough notice to get staff here to cover meetings, you know, IT, everybody's schedules around those two days.
Well, 18 minimum, you could make a, a week or 10 days if you want.
Well, we're gonna talk about it tonight, so we're gonna know when.
So, you wanna add it to B?
Could you amend your?
I'll amend my motion to add item 7B to discuss the.
Meeting change.
Meeting.
Meeting schedule change.
Date and change.
Thanks, Craig.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the revised agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing none, any updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have no old business, so we'll go to 7A, Commissioner District, American Rescue Plan Projects, and this got a lot of Dave Vanderbosh in his area.
I'd make a motion, we send that to the full board?
Second.
Right now, we've got a sirens program going on in, in the, in the southern area, and we've got multiple districts involved with that, plus we have parks and recs, the equipment for Elginak and some backup sirens for some of the, for the DPW for the warning sirens.
Castland, Columbus, good work on that.
You're good.
I wanna add there, you did get a letter, I believe, or concern from Bruce Christie from Columbus Township, and in the process, he sent me a letter stating that he needs to send out for three bids for road work, well, he's just gonna have the road commission do it, did we get back with him on that, to verify it?
Um, yes, Dina did get back with him on, on what we require for that paperwork.
Is he happy now?
I believe we are all set.
Okay, great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Mr. Bohm, well, first we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
So, I know I'm not gonna be around, I told you, I'm in charge of all that stuff in St. Clair, and I'm in charge of this particular event on the 17th. in St. Clair, and I'm in charge of this particular event on the 17th, Greg, you're not going to be.
I am not going to be here.
Around. It is St. Patrick's Day. If you wanted to move, there's not much on the agenda whatsoever. If you want to move it to next week, if you guys want to keep it to the 17th, or the 24th, doesn't, doesn't matter, I'm just giving you the, the, you know, heads up that I wouldn't be available.
I'm good with any.
Yeah, I don't have any issues either way.
My initial thought is, there's not a lot on it, I think we can handle it without you, because I will not be here the 24th.
I also won't be here on the 17th.
Yeah, I would like to not have it on the 17th either.
Let's go to the 10th.
Next week.
Any other issues on the 10th?
You have that no issue on the 10th?
Spring contract in a week?
We will do our best.
Do it, and if you can't get it, we've got a special meeting.
Well, the board could potentially approve the contract pending legal review if it's not 100% complete as well.
So we're doing it next week, though?
Well.
Does that?
You're okay with that, Greg?
Yeah, we, we have a template we use anyway, so it's, it's going to be mainly the vendor and pinning down the specifics to go into it.
I know Thursday's the standard date, would we want to change it to a different day?
I think that Wednesday.
Could you do it with 16?
Just carrying, getting the paperwork together.
16th doesn't help me, I won't be here for the 16th.
This regard.
I, I think keeping it to a Thursday is better for staff because it's a little bit more consistent, but.
Go with the 10th.
But we can make any dead work.
There will not be anything on, much on the agenda whatsoever, so. 10th, go ahead.
10th, work, sure.
Okay, and this for final action, of course?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
All right, we have a, is the motion to have a, do we have a motion for the 10th? We, okay. All right, for final action, don't we need a roll call on this, do we?